This conference will now be recorded.
Good afternoon. It's Tuesday, December 20th, 2022. This is the regular December meeting of the Davenport Public Library Board of Trustees. We're meeting in Meeting Room C of the library main. My name is Steve Evans, President of the Library Board of Trustees, and I'd like to call this meeting to order. First item on today's agenda is the roll call. Amanda Motto.
Here.
Joe Heinrichs.
Here.
Tom Engelmann.
Here.
Grant Cooper.
Present.
And myself, Steve Evans. Also want to introduce other attendees. Jeff Collins, Library Director. Lexi Riley, Assistant Library Director. Casey Shipley, Recorder. Linda Waston, Boston Associates, who is here to help us discuss and review our strategic plan. And oh, Jerry Stalick, President of the Friends of the Library Board. Thank you, everyone, for your time and attending. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Thank you, Tom. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Joe. Have a motion, a second, to approve the consent agenda. There's any discussion? Hearing and seeing them, I'll call for the vote. Joe?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
And my own vote is yes. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is public with comment. Hearing no one, we'll continue. Reports and communications is the next item on the agenda. First item there is the Friends. Jerry, can you give us an update on what the Friends are doing?
Well, I'll give it quite brief, but just a couple of, a couple of quick notes here that you always want to point out, the Friends continue to certainly actively support primarily financially multiple library activity, including patron point, even Fairmount Student Entry, library youth areas enhancement, which may have come up, Celebrate the Vended Word, even some support staff, so they're going to continue to do all this good work and hopefully will into the future. I would note that, of course, like everyone, that equities markets are taking a little toll on some of our deep pockets, but we're still in good shape, so that's not a huge problem. My other couple of notes is that we do have a new Friends brochure that we hope to print maybe by the end of January. It's been kind of working progress for quite some time, but well overdue to update it. And that's kind of one of our main donation funding efforts. So other than that, just a quick note that some of the Friends are always looking for new ways to also help support libraries and staff. And Jeff does a commendable job of letting us know where we can participate. So other than that, nothing really due to report.
And we very much appreciate all the Friends do to support the library and much thanks. And we'll do our best to provide more ways. Next item is committee reports. First item there is finance. Anything?
Just as you noticed on the budget recap, we're 41%. Here we near. Overall, our total city appropriation, we're right at 43%. So running right in, right where we should be. And you know, some items obviously are up or down depending upon, you know, timing and other things. But overall, we're doing good.
Any questions? Personnel? Amanda?
I do not have anything other than I did bring the evaluation for us to sign. No, you did do it. I just forgot to mention that we need to sign it also. I have that for us to sign, so it can be turned in. It's just valuation, just written to an actual form to be filed with the city. So I have that to complete today. Thank you so much. I was not here at the last meeting, but done a fantastic job and we're very appreciative of all you do.
If you have any questions for Amanda? There are a lot of ethics things. Malavika's not here. Next item under reports and communication is director's report. Jeff, any comments or enhancements to what you provided?
Yeah, thanks. Just to call out on a couple of items. The first is, starting this month, Lexi's going to be beginning to bring a packet of marketing materials with her to board meetings. So that is this right here in front, this pile of items. The concept on this, it's going to be a compilation of some recent materials such as bookmarks and calendars and other things that the library has created. It's one way that we're hoping to help share happenings at the library and it's in alignment with one of our strategic planning initiatives regarding advocacy. We're not sure exactly how we want to roll that out for the group. We don't want it to be distracting for everyone, but maybe we can bring it in beforehand, look at it or look at it after, whatever you'd like to do. But that's what that will be. And there were also a couple of other items that we're giving to you that are copies, like the staff picks. The Find Free Initiative is on track. We're really excited about that. That will be going to the public on January 3rd. So that will be happening and we're really excited about that. So it's going to be great. A couple of months ago, there was a suggestion made to look at the language and the overdue and the new messages to see if we could update the language. We did a little bit of research. We determined that we can change the wording in there and it is allowable under River Share stipulation policy. So we'll be working on that in the coming months as well. Just wanted to make sure to follow it up on that from direction that Malavika had mentioned a couple of months ago. We got a couple of new employees that have started and right now we only have one vacancy, so we're really excited about that. We'll be recruiting for that position next month, and that's a part-time senior clerk in customer services. Last month, we were informed that the library and the Friends are going to be beneficiaries of Rochelle A. Murray's estate. So this is actually in addition to the previous money that was requested to the library and the Friends. So the amount's going to be 30% respectively for each, and it's really a phenomenal amount that all include the estate sales and potentially real property. So again, a lot of, a lot of money, very, very generous donation. We're really thankful for that. On the second page, did everybody see the big together? So we have money from our, to actually do some advertising related to this. So this is going to be on a billboard. We're actually going to have this on three billboards coming up in January, February. So that's very rare for the library to be able to do something like that. So it's pretty exciting and we're, we're going to be able to do that. It's a really great design and bright bat design and Bedore was able to create that for us free charge, which is really cool. The other thing I wanted to talk about was the recommend service, which Steve already talked about, so we're good, we're good with that. And then Dino Member was really popular and we got a lot of really good traction on social media for that. Really fun activities where dinosaurs took over, stuffed animal dinosaurs took over the library. It was crazy. They were all some way too crazy things. I'd be happy to answer any questions, comments or concerns.
It's the biggest ones.
What was the biggest one? There was one that was like a stuffed animal. I think he might have eaten one of the other dinosaurs.
Did it make you wear dinosaur costume?
I didn't have to wear dinosaur costume fortunately, but I did, we have a meeting, a strategy in my office. So we talked about how to get more dinosaurs breeding.
Cool.
We heard a lot of excuses from the dinosaurs. They said their hands are too tiny. They've got small brains. A bunch of excuses.
Yeah, exactly.
I have a couple of questions.
Yep.
In the library story is the one that Emily submitted, the first one there. There's some acronym, DPA and TAV.
So that would be at Fairmount.
Okay.
And then TAV is the Team Advisory Board.
What's DPA?
DPA is the acronym used to differentiate within our ILS, the Integrated Library System, what each location is. So DPL is Maine, DPA is Turner Mount, DPP is Eastern.
Okay.
They just had to add that when they added the branches, they added an A for some reason, because they had to be three letters.
Yeah.
And then they added the B for the other branch.
Okay. Lots of good stuff going on. Particularly wanted to call out the the partnership with the Mary Group and St. Anthony and Community Healthcare and Iowa Total Care and Scott County Health Department, et cetera, et cetera. For the wellness event that Quinn organized, that's quite an undertaking, quite a result. It's pretty hard to miss.
It was great. We had a really wonderful turnout. We felt there was about 275 people that were here. And they were, the main event was here across the way and there were actually people that were out and going up the stairs and around the corner. Waiting to come in and get services. And then we use, we had a lot of activity in the study rooms. And then there was also a mobile health clinic at the front with a trailer as well.
One great thing.
Yeah.
Fantastic.
Yep.
That's all I have. Any other questions, comments? Okay. Moving on, next item on the agenda is council liaison. Jerry isn't not here today, so move on from there. Next item on the agenda is old business. First item there is a motion to eliminate the reconsideration of library materials policy and approve changes to the material selection policy. We discussed this in our last meeting. So today we are here to approve that. Do we have a motion to?
So moved.
Thank you, Joe. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Tom. Have a motion, a second, to eliminate the reconsideration of library materials policy and approve changes to the material selection policy. Very discussion.
Yes. Okay. I'm like, where is the, I'm looking at the.
There it is.
So just a couple of quick clarifications to make sure we're all aware of what we're talking about. The reconsideration of library materials policy has been incorporated into the material selection policy, so that isn't going away. It's already incorporated into the material selection policy and then renamed as the collection development policy because it's broader and still. And there were those attachments included as well.
Just a discussion related to that. The memos you provided are helpful. Okay, so let's get a look in a second. To eliminate the reconsideration of library materials policy and approve changes to the material selection policy. Call for the vote. Joe?
Yes.
Do them separately? No, it's one motion. Tom?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
And my own vote is yes. Motion carries. Just sweep by. Next item on our agenda is new business. First item there is discussion of this strategic plan for 2022 through 2024.
So everybody's familiar with Linda, who did great work with the library in developing this plan a year and a half ago now at this point. And she can talk a little bit more about what went into that and then what led us up to creating the plan. The plan was approved by the board in December of last year and then updated in January with a couple of minor changes to it. And then since then, the document that was included in your packet is revisions, providing some updates on a quarterly basis on what library staff have been working on to try and move forward with in terms of action plans and meeting some of the goals of the strategic plan. So the items in blue are updated from quarter one, which would have been essentially January through March of this last year. And then quarter two is green, quarter three is red. And we'll have an update again for the board for the most recent quarter that we're in now, starting in January. I think we're on track overall. We provided some of this information to the board previously and it's being shared with leadership team, compiling all this information on a quarterly basis and discussing back with staff as well, working for our teams. So that's kind of to set things, kind of a big picture.
Thank you for having me back. Good to see everybody. And I was excited reading through this to see how much progress. It's too often strategic plans sit on the shelf. And so it's exciting to see this one having so many legs. So rather than go through it point by point, unless you want to, and if you want to, tell me and we can do that. I thought we take a more global view and just kind of do, you know, one year checkup. You approved this plan a year ago. How is it serving your needs? Things have changed in the last year. You have a new director. But it appears like many of the things are still right on track. So I just want to open up and just have a discussion about, do you see this working well? Are there either minor or major changes that you see need to happen as you go forward? I'll leave it there. What are your thoughts?
Well, I think I've also been impressed with the progress that's been made so far. And as far as talking about updates and reviewing this, it also was an eye opener to me. When when I read through here and on the second page, there's an item, training and encouraging board and key volunteers to share information in their networks. And the person responsible for that is the Board of Trustees. And that was due in the fourth quarter. I'll get right on that. So yeah, and I also, as I read through, made particular, took particular attention to watch for other things that have, that involve the board. And there's also some that involve Friends. They're way out there. And those are, in all those cases, I believe the board and Friends, the combination, they're trying to get the word out and things like that. Fortunately, most of those are still in 2024 or so. Let me catch up to that. So did note that one and that was, we're going to have to revise the timeline on that one, but we will I shouldn't say redouble our efforts, but at least get on it. But no, I think that things, you know, like I say, the progress, I've been very impressed with, not only the progress that's been made, but also the extent of the progress. And there's so many things that have been mentioned that, not that it just was done, but the extent of things that had been done as far as identifying organizations to be involved and to try to get the word out to. And so, yeah, I think, I think that's really good. I don't right now have anything that I think we should change or add in that regard. Make this look forward to what we can continue to do. Oh, one thing, another thing was we're just curious. In the progress report or this is on page three, bottom rectangle, one of the progress reports there. And then printed this out at home, black and white. Okay, that's in blue, so it's not a current update. But it mentions that the, it talks about the word of mouth marketing that was done at the last in-service, next March or April. And just wondering if, if that's something that might be useful for the trustees. I didn't attend that session, but, so I don't know exactly what it is, but if that's something that would be useful for the trustees to know more about. Maybe you're the odds.
I think it could be. It was a lot about just how to get staff more comfortable sharing information about library services and programs with patrons. And we did lead a virtual session and recorded it, so that certain somebody can provide.
As I recall from setting this up, that had to do with if, mainly, mainly for staff, now that I think about it, but if somebody came up and asked a question at the customer service step, staff might refer them to something else that might be related to that, some other program or drill that they might be interested in.
Sure. So it's like a checkout, picture books. That's a good opportunity to share. Did you know it's story times or ask them for it and that sort of thing.
So if that might be something that would be applicable to us, we certainly maybe work that in sometime. Otherwise, make it available. True.
The others of the trustees have just kind of overall thoughts about how well the plan is guiding you as you're over the last year. But staff. Is it, I mean, is it working? Keep you going?
Yeah, I think overall the strategic plan is definitely working.
Okay.
From staff's perspective, I don't know if I can answer that question.
You're the closest to a staff representative.
There are three of us in the room, all representing.
I'll go up to it and get something.
I think the biggest issue that we typically face with this strategic plan is that, similar to when we're setting goals for individual employees, is things change all the time. So how do we make sure that we keep the document from being static and how do we add and remove to it? And that, that's always an easy thing. So an example of that would be the enhanced children's areas project that was not on this strategic plan at all. And it wasn't really necessarily even on the radar unless it was far away. But we had an opportunity with a quest, a financial quest, to have a good chunk of money to be able to do something really great for the community. And then we started working on that. We're still, we're doing that, but it's not technically in the strategic plan at all. So that's one area and how do we tweak it? Because it's a document that's approved by the board.
Right.
As well.
Well, and the strategic plan is intended to be a guide. I always say it's written in sand, not stone. Because life happens. You have opportunities like that and you hate to go, nope, we're going to turn down this money because it wasn't, we didn't think of it on that particular day when we put that stuff together. So I encourage you to keep it a living, breathing document.
Well, with that in mind, do we move on towards 2025 and keep adding to it or what is the final?
I think.
Or do we do it in chunks?
I think you want to do chunks because I think you want to spend the time, what you, what you think today you want to do in 2025 could be very different than what you think in 2025 you want to do in 2020. So, you know, if you needed to add a year, maybe I wouldn't go much more beyond that. I would redo it in that time frame. But when you do redo it, it should be a continuation of what you're doing now. The other thing with your particular example that you brought up, Jeff, with the redoing the children's room, you're going to do a lot of things that aren't strategic, you know, that are, that are, I'm going to call it just doing business. Now, we could have a debate whether that's strategic and that's not the point. It doesn't mean if it's not written on the page, you don't do it. These should be the guides, especially the bigger questions, your goals and your strategic issues. So does it improve marketing? Just because that wasn't a tactic, you know, you had come up with. Does it better reach underserved communities? So those are kind of the big level questions that you have. And putting aside the fact that the board has to approve it, you can add to this. Now, if I want to say what you have to do to approve those additions, my guess is bring a motion at the next board meeting to add whatever approved and changed. But that's, that's a governance question. And it looks like you spent a lot of your time this year marketing. Looks like you spent a lot of time on diversity and a lot of time on staff training. That'd be. Yes. Yeah, which was what we had for 2022. Looking ahead at 2023, it looks like you've got some evaluations coming up. Particularly, I'm looking at objective 2.1. We're evaluating the social work program coming up in quarters two and four. Because I assume you're going to want to decide whether to continue that. Going ahead two pages, objective 3.2, looks like next year evaluating programming to make sure it meets specific needs of the community. We could slide the children's thing there too. Specifically looking at local history and Parks Department stuff. That's first quarter 23. More staff training to create a welcoming environment on the next page. And that's really what looks like the beginning of 2023 looks like. Does that, based upon what you know today, sound like where you need to go in the next three to six months? If you remember your vision, right, to be welcome, basically welcoming and reflective of the community, community-wide culture of learning. The other question is, will those things move you more toward that? And eliminate whatever barriers there are toward that.
I hope so. I might just circle back to the item I mentioned, well, two items I've mentioned previously. One of them had to do with the going back to the item that is going to end up being overdue, that had to do with training and encouraging board and key volunteers to share information in the network. Ask everyone to, trustees to think about your networks. And so when comes time to talk about that, we, you know, have you know, groups individuals that, that we, you know, would like to, we could share and encourage them to use the library services or become more aware of what they are. And also, as I mentioned about the various newsletters, email newsletters that are out there on the library website that you could sign up for, that'll help us to know more about what's going on in the library, give us things to share with our networks, just that service in itself, but also other things that are available so that when we get to this point, we can be ready to spring into it. And also down the road, another one for Spies and also for the Friends is to identify opportunities and develop a schedule for board and key volunteers to share library information on social media and that community events. And then and actually that one is, is actually the second quarter of 2024, but I guess I'm wondering if, you know, so looking at this more closely to try to see what's in between now and then. In case there's something that we can start that sooner. And then also get it out in 2023 and the third quarter is get invited to attend council board meetings. You know, as maybe as a presenter or just to be there and if an opportunity arises to put in some good words for. put in some good words for for the library. And then in that case, you know, we're also sharing information and advocating for the library, putting out the other things we need.
I'd probably get in trouble with that, maybe.
Oh, okay. Maybe you do a podcast. Maybe share in one of the newsletters.
There you go.
What you're reading. Yes, Jerry.
Just a quick question. Apply what's her. I'm just curious, in any way does a strategic plan address or need to address pending closure of three elementary schools in the city? Does that have any influence on?
Well, there is, there is one, at least one item in here that talks about, at least in the in the progress sections, talks about that there's been some work done to identify groups or to group the different schools. And so obviously, that would be affected by the closures, but other than that, I guess I don't know, I'd have to ask Jeffrey Lexi about that.
If you need, like, in terms of greatest need, if that's what you're saying.
Because I might move that around.
Right.
On the other hand, I'm sorry.
I was going to say there'll be an influx of kids in new schools, obviously.
Yeah, and and in fact, might even, my recollection isn't real clear on this, but if you were to go back and look at the, there was an article, let me just say this, there's an article in the Quotity Times about that, and it even, as I recall, went into how it affected diversity and necessary diversity, but but economic status, maybe it talked about, you know, I think free and reduced price lunch and things like that. So there may be some tips in there.
That's a good example of how the strategic plan becomes living and breathing, right? That there's no way a year ago we could have predicted that and planned for it, but one of your strategic goals is to reach out more to youth and to, you know, to younger populations, especially those who aren't traditionally well-served. And so now that changes the landscape of it, and so that becomes a good discussion among the staff, among the staff and trustees about what are some of the things that you can do in that new landscape.
And that reminds me, too, did want to mention that in one of the progress reports, it talked about having, working with students to translate library materials and then to have their teacher proofread that. You know, that's really an excellent thing, way to get children involved, plus to get the work done more quickly. Great opportunity, both sides. Anything else on the strategic plan?
Actually, I have a question. One of the things that's updated in the first quarter. On the on the last one, 3.4, like we wrote tests for like various positions to be more inclusive and equitable, what did that entail? Like, how are the tests, what tests, like qualification or?
So, yeah, that was testing that we do for certain positions for developing math pool for a couple of positions in the library. So Jennifer was able to work with the TDI team on coming up with how those are structured and making sure that the questions are applicable. And if there were any questions that might have been limiting the scope of applicants that would might stop them moving forward in the process.
Okay.
So big picture, looking at, for example, would a requirement to have a driver's license make sense for every employee in the organization or not? If they're not ever going to be driving a vehicle, maybe that's not one, but that would be something would be part of that consideration.
That makes sense.
Next item is, and I guess I would offer one, you're welcome to stay.
I can stay. Thank you.
Next item on the new business is discussion of administrative policy number 4.10, completion of outreach and programs slash events.
So this is a new administrative policy to address when there are occasions when a program or event that occurs outside normal operating hours is canceled or happens in early. And the new policy addresses those expectations for library employees during those situations. Basically, a program event has early employees are expected to return to work unless it's outside of the normal hours. So in other words, like on a Friday night, if the building is closed at 5:30, there's no expectation for that employee to continue working until eight o'clock if the event ended at seven, for example. And it clarifies that they will be compensated for those scheduled hours. They don't, situations like this don't occur frequently, but they do happen often enough that we need to have a written policy that addresses that.
A question on that. In item number one, at the end last parade says employees will only be paid for scheduled hours starting after the latest time a library building closes. So is that, does A equal any, when any library closes? Or I wasn't sure what that was saying. So in other words, if a person canceled due to deteriorating weather conditions, so, you know, a staff member, say, from Fairmont, it's Monday, so it closes 5:30. And so then, if they were.
All the libraries now are set to close at the same time.
Oh, that's.
So that's slight, slight change.
Yes, yeah.
So, but this would address if, let's say, we had to evacuate Fairmont and because of a pipe burst issue, a water safety issue, something like that, we had to pull people out of the library, that would have helped that situation.
So for these, they're just, so say it's like something that's on, I don't know, a Saturday or might go up on Saturday.
Might even be a Sunday.
A Sunday.
Yeah, that's mostly what this is going to address is the expectation for that employee when we're expecting them to work. Most of it's going to be programs or outreach events. So that we're either attending a community event or we are running the event ourselves and it's outside of the normal operating hour. So on Sunday, we're in a parade, for example, and the parade is canceled because of bad weather.
And they're not paid for anything because?
Right now, they wouldn't be.
Because it's after, it's not open at all.
Yeah, we would make sure that the employee is paid for it.
Okay, they wouldn't?
Yeah, or if the if they're scheduled to work three hours for the parade and the parade only lasts two hours, then we make sure, yeah, they need to come back to the library and work unless the library is closed, then we would make sure they get paid that last hour.
I'm making that. Okay, so if the if the event is canceled, they get paid for the time in the scheduled point?
Yeah, only if it's outside of normal operating hours.
Yeah.
Because the expectation would be to come back to the library. They would have the option to use their vacation time if they would prefer not to. For example, or, you know, the event goes to seven, we're open until eight, they can wrap things up and take that last hour, they could use a vacation hour for that time.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay, so if that employee was at the, you know, worked at that library and left there to go to the special event, I mean, does that happen or are these all?
Yeah, almost always, that's what happens is, so usually the employee will start at the library and then go out because they need to get equipment, stuff to hand out. They might be getting in the owl and driving to the event, that sort of thing. And then usually they'll return back to that library as well.
Has this ever been, or sure has, but it hasn't been an issue quite often, or is this just being prevented?
It happens periodically. I would say, I don't know, once every two months or so.
It's, I can think of at least three times this year that it's happened.
Yeah, it's not, it's not something that happens frequently because most events are typically going to be when we're open. And then, but when it does, we want to have something in writing to make sure that it's clear for the expectation for the employee and then clear for administration, too, so we know what actions to take.
And my question is, has it become an issue? I mean, have there been discrepancies in what's anticipated between either the library or the employee?
I'm not aware of any specific disciplinary issues.
So this is more being proactive?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we're not, I'm not aware of any specific disciplinary issues related to this.
It's more been confusion from employees of, okay, this event got called out because of rain, do I get paid or do I have to use vacation time?
Yeah, when I read number three first, employees will utilize available vacation or holiday leave if they would like to leave earlier, it's like, oh, that's if somebody said, I don't think I want to do this anymore.
Yeah, we still have expectations in place and it's still a process for obtaining approval to.
Okay.
To not work.
Because I just, I just stuck in there with.
So would that be like if it was rained out and they still had an hour left before the library closed and you come back for an hour? Okay, so for the first line, when it's talking about the only be paid, I guess I'm confused by the only, they're going to only be paid for the scheduled hours starting after the latest timeline. So they were supposed to work at something that was going to go like, I don't know, you said what time the library closes, eight? So it was going to be, they were going to work five to nine, and it's called off, they're only paid for eight to nine? Is that what that's saying? Yes, and the hours before that, they would be expected to come back because they were first to work. Okay, and if it was on a Sunday, when it's not at all, then they're paid the whole day. Okay. Got it. Okay.
Yeah, there are questions, comments on?
And this is just the first review discussion, right? Jennifer Antispect will be here next month and she'll be able to answer more detailed questions as well and provide some specific examples if you need those as well.
I understand you're talking.
Sure.
Watch it.
Thank you. Next thing will be a bit of discussion of the programming policy, your vision statement.
Okay, so the programming policy is another biggie, just like the collection development policy. And at this point, library administration leadership team, programming team, DIT, have all reviewed the programming policy and made recommended changes as outlined in your packet. There are some significant changes to the existing policy. Those changes are essentially designed to clarify the processes, the expectations for how we provide programs and events. A couple of highlights on what we do, we define what a program is, we provide additional standards for programming, we incorporate practices. So for example, we have the requirement that we do a police background check for volunteers and presenters at all programs that it currently is standard practice, but it's not in policy. And that's something that we want to clarify. We also have a proposed program form that didn't exist until recently. We want to make sure that's in policy as well. And then also for requests for reconsideration, similar to how we handle materials as well, so that we have addressed all of that. There are two versions, there's a red line version, it looks really difficult to read, and then a clean version, it's easier to read.
Discussion? In the standards for programming, just as I read the part that's been added, library programs should align with the library bill of rights, I know that that's a document, and the library initiated programs and displays as a resource, interpretation of a library bill of rights, is that all one item or is displays as a resource?
That's all one item. If you look at the clean copy, there you'll see the hyperlink, you can't see that on the red line version.
Right, but.
Yeah, it's called library initiative programs and displays as a resource and interpretation of library bill of rights. That's the document that the LA has created.
Yeah, but for people that don't know that, I guess just wondering if there was someone who indicated those are titles, two individual titles and not three?
So it's not clear on the blue and underline? You can't tell on the red line version because it's all underlined red, but the clean copy answers what it says now.
Okay, I understand.
Does that make sense?
I found that.
Yeah, it's very confusing if you look at the other ones. Looks like a long sentence.
Thank you. Moving on down then to about the the sixth bullet, about programs will be offered free of charge. I was just curious, is there no program that has a material fee?
No, typically, we don't charge for any any fees for attending or materials costs or anything like that. We try to, we try our best to provide equitable access to everyone in the community so they can attend the programs for free. And fortunately, we have great supporters with the Friends, for example, who donate a good chunk of money of approximately $30,000 a year just to help with programs so that we can help, and that some of the program costs are covered through that.
No fees, that's cool. Reminds me of the timeline, that you do a previous library director with that, you just goes back a couple of libraries. Gee, you know, you don't want to get them, you know, $20, $30 a book for free is a pretty good deal, you own a library budget speaker or something, even if you were charged to die and she went, what? You can't do that. Okay. Let's see. Also, on the top of page two, another question, and this talking about specifically, it says programs may address religious themes to educate or inform, but not to promote a particular religion. I'm not in any way suggesting that we promote a particular religion, but I was just wondering about, I guess, having a program about a particular religion, just to explain, could something like that be done in a series of programs perhaps? I'm trying to answer, I'm not just.
Yeah, I think from the example you just provided, could, right now, our current policy says no programs. If we did what as a series, so if we had one program on a particular religion and another program two weeks later or the next month on another religion, spotlight and educate those, we could do that. Otherwise, we're trying to make sure that we don't, that we're separating, make sure the stage is very clear.
So you can't have one just to like inform on the valley or something? You can't just have a program on that because it's old standalone, seems like promotional as opposed to informational?
Probably, probably not, but we do say it's educator form, so the way it's, the updated version is written, it gives us a little bit more wiggle. Can we be able to do that if we can clearly articulate that in this script? Yeah, again, it's for, right now, the current version of policy says no religious programming at all.
Yeah, sorry, I meant.
Thankfully not here, but I just saw that the library come in under attack because they did not have the Christmas tree. I thought, if you're going to have one, you're going to have to have everything. They're going to allow it from Florida and everything else.
I guess the question I have is under standards for programming, I guess, that one where you're talking about cannot endorse or oppose a candidate. And then that second sentence, programs may address religious themes to educate or inform, not promote a particular religion. I think it would appear to be there's a hole in there big enough to bust through in terms of, you know, people could make the argument always it's about educating. in terms of, you know, people could make the argument always it's about educating or informing, whether it actually is about promoting a particular religion. Not that I think we need to be overly concerned about that, but I do think that may be something that is challengeable. Not, I'm not an attorney, but if we've seen that, you know, that kind of language.
Well, I don't think I'll go through the discretion of that anyway, I mean, so it would be considered at that level at least. I mean, we don't just have to do a program just because somebody suggested, but yeah, once it goes through, once it gets through, then yeah.
But, but my point is, you know, is there a way to change that language where we wouldn't necessarily have that hole? Now, I don't know if there is a way, because you have to, you have to allow for the informing and educating public, but then I can butt that up against a group that wants a particular religious belief, you know. I just see a difficulty in figuring out that language. I, you know, I don't know if we, if you can, I don't know if there is a way to parse that. I, you know, just an observation.
No, it's a really, really great point, and that may be why the language has been the way it has been is to make it very clear that we will not offer any programming that is religious in nature, period. It does limit us in terms of some of the programming that we're able to do. And I don't know if we necessarily have a solution to it in this capacity, but we do have the request for reconsideration part now that's added in. So if we do run into issues, we can follow through that process and then it can get cycled through back up to the board to make a determination as well.
Does, does limiting that type of programming to panel discussions like we talked about before, like just have?
Yep.
For either political candidates or religions, in other words, to have like on a comparative basis or, you know, having just one and four.
That's essentially what we've done to this point, the example you provided with the Interfaith one program that we drafted recently was essentially that, was a panel discussion with a couple of different representatives to talk about, so it wasn't one particular religion, and that was what we did in that circumstance.
This is something we'd rather be developing. One library had a drag event and the community got upset, so pastor went to the library and read scripture for an hour, got clearance to do it, so I don't know if that's what I'm thinking would be a problem. I don't know how you'd answer that.
So for that one, the example you just provided, we would probably offer them space to use one of our meeting rooms if that fits within the guidelines of our use of, not necessarily a library sponsored event, not one that the library did.
Of course, the people who didn't like the drag event, so it was wonderful. Yeah, let's think maybe bringing it back to panel discussion type things where. That may be an answer.
Is. Do we, is this language coming from, did we copy the base of somebody or do we just?
Most of the additions were things that we're already doing that we wanted to clarify or they're relating back up to that Library Bill of Rights or the library initiative programs policy as well. Anytime we review any policy too, we will, we will look at other libraries in our community, so other Quad City libraries, definitely Riverdale libraries, and then also within the state, and then we also have a couple of our favors that we look at and see what they're doing as well for best practices, just to make sure we're kind of on the same, same page as best we can, if it makes sense in our circumstances.
Sure, there's no reason.
And I think we either have, obviously have control over what the library may choose to try to present as a program and allow them and find presenters, so we have control of that. The other side of it is that any program that's submitted has to be approved, so, you know, if it's something that looks, it sounds like it could be controversial, we have at least the opportunity to investigate it further or if anything obvious, it seems like it might be a problem or run counter to make it appear that we support or endorse since it would be a library program, we could deny that. So I think maybe if we go back to something I mentioned about a series of programs, if you didn't do that, instead had, so, you know, instead of having like, it's not what I'm saying, I'm not saying that, instead of having the panel discussion, you might, you might also allow a series of individual presentations, but, but keep it to panel discussion, get the candidates, or the candidates for, for a comparative religion type presentation if it is religious in nature. I guess, I don't think we've seen it before. But yeah, I'm sure I'm considering the time.
That particular sentence, the programs may address religious themes to educate or inform, but not to promote a particular religion, and then programs are planned to be inclusive for all cultures, came from the DEI team to make sure that, and the programming team, to make sure that we're able to offer those, those types of programs. In particular, being inclusive of all cultures.
So I guess maybe, as it is, we would just need to be more vigilant, anyways, written right now. This has to be particularly vigilant about whether or not, that it does address religious themes to educate and inform, but not to promote.
Yeah, because right now, the current policy says the library does not offer programs to support or oppose any specific religious conviction, so that that's part of the wish that we're adding to it is to clarify it and make it so that we can in fact offer programming that's responsive to all the community's needs.
I mean, really, I don't think informing, educating, supporting, or whatever, so, kind of calls me anyway, but the way I mean, I'm sure that meant just to limit all of it, I don't know, I do think there is a difference between large and between informing and promoting. I mean, at the Montessori school my son goes to, they give information about lots of different holidays that go on in Christmas for different cultures, I don't think they're promoting any one of them, I think they're giving kids information on each single one, so, I mean, I do think that there's a way to do it and it comes through us, it's not like we're sponsoring something that just somebody, somebody says, I want to have this, that's fine, they don't necessarily get it, I mean, they have the control over what we're putting forward as the programming, so. Right, like if people want to get up and say whatever, under our sponsorship, I mean, they might do that, but not under the libraries.
That discussion, if you're concerned.
Well, I think the. I think the. The important distinction is that, you know, in programming that we as a library can put on or are directly connected to versus a program that somebody from the community comes in and wants to put on, say in one of our meetings, you know, there's a distinction to those two, that I think that is fine. There's, you know, that is, I don't have a whole lot of issues with, but so long as, you know, we have to make sure that what we do under the sponsorship of the library, we want to be very careful about crossing that line.
And that's what this particular policy does address, so we have a separate policy that covers the use of meeting rooms and what can and cannot occur in the meeting rooms, and we have, we're less concerned about that. I guess what you're referring to, because it's not something, yeah, it's not library sponsored. We get, we're just allowing us to use our space, which is fine, but then that opens up a whole other avenue. That could get really, really challenging, there's some libraries that, if you provide, yeah, if you provide something to the community, it's to be fair for everybody to be able to use it. So if you offer your space in a meeting room for one group, you can't discriminate against another group just because you may disagree with it, so some examples of that might be something extreme where you have like a hate group, somebody that's a neo-Nazi group or somebody that is, wants to use the meeting room space, and that's where it gets a little bit more challenging for the library to be able to provide that space and not discriminate against someone wanting to use the space. So we would generally handle that under a behavior policy to make sure that the behavior is appropriate for the use of that space in addition to the policy.
Yeah, really.
I guess we have less confidence than I have in the. Last, second to the last paragraph on second page, taking the last sentence, it says, the request for review of programs will be considered in the same manner as requests for reconsideration of library materials as outlined in the collection development policy. Is the timeline there fair? Because I think you have like, maybe, I don't remember what the timeline is, and we're, materials request for consideration, it seems to be like it might be a thirty day limit if it was.
There is no timeline.
Oh, isn't there? Okay, fine.
There was, but the policy you just approved.
Okay.
Forty minutes ago, removed the thirty.
No, that's fine.
We do try to be very prompt about this, obviously. The problem with limiting, putting in that time, then it does win our options, because there's. For how quickly we can respond.
Okay. Do you want to make a discussion?
I love the emphasis on us. I know you said in your directives report that we're going to be doing information, each one, these are great. I have not seen them, I'm sitting here upstairs typically, but.
They're just available to.
Yeah, they're available at all the self checkouts and you're going to, PDF or something like, yes. I read a lot of romance.
You want the discussion on programming policy, on the president's comments?
Particularly the programming policy, is there ever any initial effort made to try to pursue having it be consistent, maybe across all Quad City library system? Because I could, I could imagine a group saying, hey, well, we can't do it here, but they're a little more liberal in their policy over here, or vice versa and stuff, but I know that's a mountain to climb, but in some ways, particularly with respect to some of these more radical groups or something, if we had a consistent policy, Quad City wide on some of that, it'd be something to think about.
There's no other business that can come before this forum, any motion to adjourn?
I would ask something, I have some opportunities, I have some Boy Scouts who are needing some service hours. I didn't know if there was anything downstairs at the library that you use, or if any of you have any organizations you work with, but I'm looking for a couple hours with about four to six kids on their citizenship and community merit badge. Also, Jeff, keep in the back of your mind, if you have any larger projects, occasionally I've got Scouts that are looking for Eagle projects. You have that, keep that in mind, because my piece of a stone fell in under.
I call it slave labor.
When I was at Scouts, they weren't afraid of that. They just didn't give it that name.
Okay, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thanks, Tom, second?
Second.
Thank you again, motion to second adjourn, all is a favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You want to? Okay.
Holidays, huh?